Good evening and welcome to coverage of the Ward Five City Council race here in the city of champions, Brockton Community Access. My name is Mark Lindy and we're partnering with WXBR Radio. My colleague Ron Van Dam, thank you for being here, Ron.
You're very welcome.
We're going to have each of the candidates be able to let you know about their background. They'll have an opening statement, a closing statement. We'll have a series of questions. They'll get a chance to answer each other and, time permitting, they may even get a chance to ask each other a question. We're going to start with opening statements and all three candidates were invited. All three candidates are here. Thank you for coming. We drew ballot order, not ballot order, I should say, we drew opening statement order and closing statement order. So the person that chose the first opening statement is Ann Borogad. So Ann, look at the camera that has the red light and give your opening statement, whichever one's on at the time.
Okay. Hi, I'm Ann Borogad and I'm running for Ward Five City Council. My background includes, well, graduating from Brockton High like an awful lot of lucky people. In 1976, I'm still part of Brockton High as an alumni officer for the BHS Alumni Association. My background includes a degree in marketing, bachelor's in finance, and a master's certificate in women in politics and public policy, and a professional certificate in nonprofit management. I have had several years of experience in banking and the stock market and the business world, and my most recent experience has been more involved with nonprofits and grant writing, advocacy, and fundraising. I'm running for Ward Five City Council because I want to be part of the solution. I've been involved with the city for many years now in a variety of different capacities, from the Brockton Library Foundation, to the Adult Learning Center Advisory Board, to several other organizations.
Time.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Dennis Denaply.
Thank you very much, Ron and Mark, for having this forum tonight. Good evening, folks. My name is Dennis Denaply. I am your Ward Five City Council, and I've had the privilege of serving you as a full-time city councilor in Ward Five for the past 14 years. And during my tenure, I have served as council president, chairperson of the following: public safety, accounts, real estate, finance, ordinance, and also traffic. As a city councilor, I have worked hard bringing new business into Ward Five and helping retain existing businesses staying in the city. 14 years gives me the experience to be an effective city councilor.
You still have time?
Thank you.
10 seconds.
Please consider me on September 17th as your city councilor, full-time city councilor, Dennis Denaply. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. Ollie Spears.
Hello, my name is Ollie Spears. There it is. Hello, my name is Ollie Spears, and I live on the east side of Brockton, and I'm running for Ward Five City Councilor, and I'm asking for your vote on September 17th. I'm a lifelong Brocktonian. I'm married for eight years, three daughters, I go to Downey School, and I'm running for accessibility, accountability, and also on public safety. You want a city councilor that returns your phone calls and you know who he is. That's why I'm running for Ward Five City Councilor.
Thank you, Ollie. Okay, we will mix up the order as we go along. So question number one is Mr. Ron Van Dam.
What can realistically be done in Ward Five and in neighborhoods across the city to make them safer?
Okay, and the order for this one is Ollie Spears first.
I'm glad you asked. Basically, it's grassroots. So I want to work, I want to grow what we have now with the Neighborhood Watch and go across Ward Five and break it down to the precincts and have precinct captains, and also break up the neighborhoods and neighborhoods associations, break up the precincts, break up the different communities, and make it a grassroots effort. You know, a community that works together is unified. So that's what, so, you know, we could call on the police, they're more of being reactive, but as a community, we can be proactive, you know? So that's what I want to work on. Neighborhood Watch and Neighborhood Associations, grassroots.
Thank you, Ollie. Ann, same question, next.
Sure, okay. To increase safety in the communities, definitely without a doubt, communication and people feeling included in part of the solution. I agree with my associate here that part of the solution is continued organization with Neighborhood Watches and communicating with the individuals and their concerns. I believe safety is a variety of different things, from just the way a traffic light, you know, interacts with major intersection, to how people feel with well-lit streets, blessed potholes, and again, activity going on in the streets. To me, it starts in the schools and in the families, and that's what I hope to communicate to everyone.
Thank you. Dennis?
Thank you, Mark. Well, it is all about being a good neighbor, being a watchdog in the neighborhood. And for the past 14 years, I have started up crime watches in Ward Five. We had an incident in Ward Five, on the south side of Ward Five, and we had a meeting at the Mary Baker School. It was well-attended, it was on cable, and it was well-advertised, and we got a good response on it, and we started up a neighborhood crime watch in that particular neighborhood. Neighborhood crime watches have to stay on that particular street. You don't combine the whole neighborhood. It's street by street in Ward Five, and that's what we do. Just like the meeting we had the other night over at the Unknown School, we tried to get people to sign up for crime watches that night, too.
Thank you. Is there any follow-up that any of you need on that one?
Yes, I definitely had to follow up. Before, we had the two murders, 14-hour span, Mr. Denaply wasn't even a part of that community meeting. He jumped on the bandwagon after that.
Okay, would you like to respond to that?
How can you respond that I was not part of that?
Just like, I just talked to the TV and I told the...
Okay, okay.
No, I totally disagree with you. You know, I mean, you're a new neighbor in the ward, you have no idea what I've been doing for 14 years. You lived in Ward Seven.
Yeah, for a year.
Well, you didn't live in Ward Five, Ollie.
Okay, we're not, we're not going to go back and forth. I'll just let you guys address it one at a time.
Yeah, one at a time.
Ann, did you have anything that you wanted to add to that?
Not really. I mean, I walk the ward so I know it's safe. I walk all over the city, and early in the morning till early evening at dusk. It's safe in many areas, and it's a part of being alert and involved and just saying hi to people. There's plenty of people out there walking and feeling safe. There's definitely issues we need to address, and I believe a lot of them are case-by-case basis, certainly.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to question number two, Ron.
What is your position on the proposed power plant in Brockton and why?
Okay, the first one would be, on this one would be Ann.
Okay, I'm vehemently opposed to the power plant and have been since the beginning for several reasons. One primarily is because certainly the health safety, and here we want to talk about public safety. The idea of a power plant of that magnitude being in a community as populated as ours, near main streets, schools, elderly housing, and a facility for those that have serious brain injuries is by far a real threat to the community. That's public concern, number one. Number two, I don't believe that in the future we're going to be using fossil fuel, and yes, I know that they're supposed to be gas-powered to the extent that we are. I believe we need to look at other ideas and learn from others, and I just don't believe that that's completely good, and also, I know you're going to cut me off, but let's remember that that power plant and that energy is not going to be used to this community, and that concerns me the most.
Made the time, that's great. Okay, Dennis?
Thank you, Mark. I have been in opposition to the power plant from day one when this story started about six years ago, and also have funded through the city council the monies to fight this with attorneys. So I am in opposition to the power plant.
Okay. Ollie?
I'm against the power plant. Talked with several neighbors, talked with people in the ward, and they're against it. And personally, I'm against it. My wife and all three of my children are asthmatic, and bringing more junk into the city, like the power plant, and will definitely hurt the quality of life and the quality of air, so I'm definitely against it.
Okay, all three are in common on this. Any follow-up or additional information needed?
No.
Okay. I'll go into question three, Ron.
Sure. Are we ready?
Yes.
Okay. How would you raise revenue for the city? People talk about putting more Safety Patrol officers on the streets and building the cities in other ways, going toward infrastructure, but nobody really talks about how this would be paid for, bringing businesses into Brockton, obviously, but that doesn't happen either. So how do you improve a city and meet rising costs that go up every year in a city of this size without raising taxes?
Okay, first up on this would be Dennis.
Well, thank you very much, Mark. Good question, Ron. In Ward Five, a couple of examples. I have supported businesses in this city that were supposed to move out of the city to move into other communities, and we retained those businesses in the city. We have new businesses coming into Ward Five. We have a brand-new Cumberland Farms that will be breaking ground very shortly across the street from the East Side Firehouse. Also, JLS Systems is a brand-new business on the east side, and we have a barbecue, Boot Seat BBQ from Revia, Massachusetts, that will be moving into the city. It's a manufacturing company, and it'll bring revenue and about 25 jobs into the city, and I was part of that. So I'm trying to do my job as a city councilor to bring new business into the city.
Thank you, Dennis. Ollie, next?
Yes, definitely. I think raising revenue, you have to do private sector and also through the public. Changing the downtown by, you know, we might have to spend some money to make some money. Just the whole infrastructure downtown. Downtown is our heart and is part of the Ward Five, so we need to switch it to the two-way. We need to bring, fix some abandoned buildings, and maybe if we could find money, maybe we fix them up, the city, and rent them out. We're already a landlord at the baseball stadium, maybe we could make some money and get some tenants in some buildings. And also, like Dennis said, bring businesses in. I'll pick up the phone personally and call different businesses, different corporations, and try and get more to the east side.
Thank you. Ann, same question?
Okay. Well, first of all, you know, my background is accounting, and I say these words all the time, audit and accountability. First of all, we need to know how the departments are working in this city. It's not to say they're working poorly. It's simply to say, are they working to the maximum that they can? Do they have enough people in all the departments to continue serving this city and grow with this city? And I'm mentioning that because that's immediately where the costs go. So maybe that's part of, it's always that we need to bring revenue in. There's no doubt in my mind that we need to bring revenue in. How do we do that? Well, first of all, I've been involved with the Metro South Chamber of Commerce for almost 15 years now, and we're always connecting with small businesses, large businesses, to see their need and their connection to bringing their success to our community. I could continue elaborate, but the buzz has gone off here on other issues.
Okay, well, I will let each of you have another minute on that because it's very important in terms of economic development for the city. So Ann, you can continue.
Okay. I'm also with the Downtown Brockton Association, as everyone's mentioned here. Yeah, downtown is the heart of Brockton. It's not going to go back to where it was when we were kids. Like everything else, things change, but it can still become an area that is conducive to not only being welcoming for residents, but also for small businesses. In particular, I cite several businesses that have been popping up locally, one of them that's doing quite well right now, and connecting with the community and working with other individuals to have activities downtown. We have a successful parade every year, but we don't just have one holiday that we need events at. We have several going on. That's bringing people back into the city. That's giving a positive reflection to downtown.
Okay, same, if you have anything more to add, Ollie?
Definitely. Definitely, I spoke about the private sector, so definitely we bring some investors in to revitalize the downtown. I think we definitely will put, give that punch to the city that needs to bring the city back with the downtown area. Also, bring some investors in the private sector up on the Crescent Street Sector, the old 508 Club that needs to be revitalized. And like I said, I'll be the ambassador of the east side. I'll make phone calls, and you'll be able to call me, and I'll return your phone call.
Thank you. Dennis?
Thank you, Mark. Speaking about the downtown, we have, the Trinity Financial Group is going to be breaking ground in October, and it's a $100 million project for new housing downtown, as well as businesses that will be on the first floor in lofts. We also have the Lincoln Building, which is across the street from the Brockton Post Office, that Brophy Phillips is remodeling, and that's going to bring in some new businesses. And we also have the DeAngelo's Building that's vacant on the Montello Street. I've met with the owners, and that is a project that's going to bring in about $80,000 worth of taxes. We also have the Knight Building, which is underway right now, and that's going to be lofts. So we are trying to do something downtown. We're trying to bring people into the downtown. You know, a lot of businesses bought buildings eight, five, six, seven, eight years ago that are in the downtown that have been empty for five years. They're all underwater, and the city can't help these people because they're underwater.
Okay, next question, Ron.
What are some ideas that you may have in the sense of introducing ordinances and bills to the council, in the sense of perhaps image of the city? Let's go there. Many buildings are abandoned, the facades are falling apart. We have sometimes homeless on the streets collecting monies, people congregating. The image that the city has has affected the entire area. We know of people in other cities, even in New Hampshire, who are quite aware of Brockton's problems. Image seems to be very important. What ordinances would you put into effect in order to make the city look better, to change its course as far as image is concerned?
First up on this is Ollie.
Definitely. Well, the first thing I would do, I know when the snow removal in the wintertime, the resident has to go all the way to the curb. So during the summertime, I think the resident should go all the way to the curb, make sure they're weeding the sidewalks, cleaning up the trash in front of their house. I think that goes a long way. Also, work with the city because, you know, they just put, they just fixed the bridges over on Center Street, over Crest Street. They planted the trees, and already they have, it's overgrowing with trash all around it. So I'll definitely work with, you know, the DPW, make sure we're cleaning up the areas. But definitely have the citizens go all the way to the curb. That helps, and drive a little more time. If I get more time, we'll talk about the homelessness, too, but I'll talk about that after.
Okay, same question, Ann?
Okay. First of all, I've been fortunate enough to be involved with Brockton Intebet Community, and one of the ordinances, they've been involved with several programs to address the foreclosure issue. It's no secret that we had in both zip codes the highest foreclosure rate in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So working with the community and individuals with ideas and solutions to help create ordinances. I'm a strong proponent of inclusivity, and that begins with asking individuals what they want to see differently. Myself, I walk all over this city, and I have witnesses, to attest to it. One of the things I'm so sick of is all these plastic balls that I'm now guilty of drinking out of, all over the place. So I look forward, and I have worked in the past with our senator, and I've followed up with our reps to do something about the water bottle and other plastic bottle redemption to help clean it up. So that's one of, like, Ollie, I would like to go back to that question. It's a huge one.
Okay. Dennis?
Thank you, Mark. Well, last night at the city council meeting, we just accepted a $100,000 grant from the state and from Registrar John Buckley's office to work on the foreclosure rate in Brockton. And what this is going to do is they're going to hire an individual to go look at some of these abandoned homes, and we're going to start the process to take these homes back and list them with the railators and put them back on the market and fix them up. As for the ordinances, I have two ordinance pending right now. I have a clothing bin ordinance that we're trying to clean up the city on, and it's in the ordinance department right now. The other one is abandoned cars, boats, trailers, SUVs, and also, I'm trying to include the height of grass. Now, the city of Wood Socket, Rhode Island, has a grass ordinance. If the grass is more than six or eight inches, 10 inches high, the landlord has to cut it. If not, we could go in there and fine them for not cutting the grass. But this takes time to pass an ordinance, and you need 11 votes on the city council. Thank you.
Okay, since two of the three of you asked for more time, you get your wish. So we'll let Dennis continue, and then we'll go in reverse order.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, to pass an ordinance, it takes a long time. I've had these two ordinances in the workings now for about six or seven months. To pass an ordinance, you have to define every single word that is in there, because if it's not corrected, you can get sued and there's legal action taken. So we have a, Mark Gilde is our legal counsel, represents the city. Everything goes through Mark. Mark will turn it upside down, right side up, and whatever guidelines he puts on the ordinances that we try to amend in the city of Brockton, that's what Mark does for us.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to Ann.
Okay. I wanted to get back to Ron's part about imaging. First of all, I wanted to set, you mentioned about the homeless, and that is, you know, a serious concern, but it's a lot more involved. We're not the only ones with that concern, and I believe one of the situations I'm so pro is working with institutions of higher learning and also reviewing what other cities and towns do to address those concerns. When we get back to ordinances, for example, you mentioned the panhandling. We have a lot of discussions about that at Downtown Brockton Association, and the police officers explain to us what's legal and what's not, and the individual's civil rights. So it's easy to make a statement saying, oh, let's pass a law on this, but as Dennis pointed out, there are so many aspects to consider. To me, it's understanding why we're in that situation in the first place as a nation, as far as homeless is concerned.
Thank you. Ollie?
Last Saturday, when I was leaving City Hall after the peace rally, I was walking to my car, and I passed, and I saw a homeless man sitting on a bench, and I sat next to him, and I started talking to him, and I was asking what book he was reading, and we had a conversation. And I said, why are you sitting over here? He said, well, you know, I'm homeless. And I feel safer over here downtown versus Nito Park. And Nito Park is right next to where Mainspring is. He said, I'd rather sit here because there's too much stuff going on, it's crazy. So I said to myself, we need to do something. We need to be able to clean this park up. If people are violating any laws, we need to get them out of there. So that's definitely something I would like to work on. Homelessness is there. We can't fix everything, but at least we can make a safe environment where some homeless people need to be.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the next question. What would you do as a city councilor to keep the public informed? I'm going to just let Ann take this one first.
Oh, thank you. Well, I believe in being out and about in the community, and I am out and about in the community, bringing out the information. I'm fortunate enough to be on WXBR for a couple of minutes every Friday to highlight the good things, because again, we wanted to talk about image, and there's a whole lot of good things going on. Sometimes that gets lost with the concerns, and not to ever downplay the serious concerns we have in this community. Another way I believe in is talking to people face-to-face, and I interact with people continuously, whether it's walking down the street, being involved with the various events and programs and nonprofits that I'm involved with in the community. I also use the paper. I'm known for doing my letters to the editor, and I will continue to do so. As far as phone calls go, I had 12 before I came here, and I answered 10, so I thought that was pretty good, short span, and continue to do so.
Thank you. Same question to Dennis.
Thank you, Mark. Well, you know, I'm out and about in the community and have been for 14 years. Sometimes my wife says to me, when I go to the supermarket, why does it take me two hours to come home? When you meet and greet people and they have issues, you address them at the time. And I always return phone calls, and, you know, when there's an important issue that comes up in the ward, I'll have a ward meeting when there's a crime that happens on the east side or anything, and if it's a water issue, no matter what it is, we'll always get the community involved. You know, my wife and I, the other day, we walked a particular street that was having a major problem with some loud noise on the weekends and parties and whatnot, and we addressed that issue. That's what it's about, getting out in the community and helping out. And I've done that for quite a long time.
Okay, Ollie, same question?
Well, the resident of Ward Five, you had me to thank for that. Now that he has competition, he's been out in the neighborhoods, walking door-to-door. But let's get back to it. What I would do, I would do ward meetings once a month, have everybody come in, and it'll be a roundtable discussion where we have everybody talk. And I'll make sure that it's on my Facebook, I'll make sure it's on my website, I'll make sure that every citizen of Ward Five is informed.
Thank you. Rebuttal?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to go over there with the communication part. I'm all for ward meetings. I certainly don't want to discourage those, but I'm real. A lot of people are really busy, and it's hard to get out, and some of them have kids, elderly parents, situations, some of them are going to college at night, working during the day. I'm a strong proponent of interacting in other ways that are possible, whether it's emailing, and now I want to try to attempt Skype. I'm not, you know, necessarily a pro in the technology area. And I also volunteer for Brockton Community Access outside of Brockton Community Access, taping the different events that go on, and somehow that, to me, brings out all the positives that are going on and lets people know about different things going on. So that, I feel, is just another avenue to bring out, you know, communicating, and certainly open to others, tweeting, et cetera, as that time goes on.
Thank you. Dennis? Did you want to follow up on that one?
No.
No, okay. I'm just going to ask you a follow-up, actually, all three of you. Ann just touched upon it. I'm curious to know, when originally Ann was listing her priorities, cable wasn't one of them. I'm just asking, we have a government channel, we have a public channel, and we have an educational channel. It is available for elected officials to use. Would you use it?
Yes, I would, but I already do in a variety of different instances. But I would do it, I believe, with interacting with something else. For example, like I have in the past, if there's a different positive event going on. I have also taped with the new grants that have been coming through the city and the forums they've had, certainly on the revitalization and renovation of City Hall. We cover those, too, open to the public events. I tape those. I tape some others. I'm going to clear this up right now. I'm by no stretch of the imagination an expert, so yes, I miss people's heads and, you know, don't always get everything. And I have a lot of patient people here that help me edit. But what I'm saying is, this is just another avenue, and for some people that can't get out, a little challenge, or the weather is not in their favor, it's just another avenue to bring out valuable information, so. Been using it for some time and plan on continuing to do so.
Dennis?
When I was council president in 2006, I was the first spokesman for the city council to go on the radio. And we did that every Monday before city council meeting and every Tuesday morning, both with the former employees that were at the station at the time. I don't know if it's being done today, but it was done in the past, and I'd like to see it get done again. I'm always calling Ron's show with information, and when people say that I'm not available, I just, it just profound me to say that, you know, I'm out in the community all the time. If there's one person that's out there giving information, I have a website, it's called DennisDenaply.com. It's up and running. It's all kinds of information on it. I'm on the radio, and I have regular ward meetings when there are major, major issues out there.
Thank you. Ollie?
Yes, I think it's a great asset. During the public meeting the other day, I called up the TV station, and I asked if it was going to be live or taped, because I know a couple of people wanted to watch it, and they're handicapped, and they couldn't make it. So I think it's definitely a great asset, definitely a great asset.
Okay, thank you. Ron?
It's a little bit of a confusing question, but an important one, and I ask everybody, every candidate for city council, the same question. And that is that the people in your ward vote for you based on what you're saying here, your opinions, your ideas. At the same time, you're voted in to represent them fully, to take their ideas and bring them to council. So how do you operate? Which is your mode? Is it your ideas or is it the ideas of the people that you put into play? Is it your ideas, or is it the ideas of the people that you put into play?
First up on that is Dennis.
Well, thank you very much. I could sum it in one sentence. Your concerns and my concerns.
Ollie, next?
Yes, power to the people. That's what it's about. They elected me to represent them, so I want to make sure that they're calling me, I'm calling them, and we're having a dialogue of any issues or any concerns. So I definitely will listen to the Residence Award Five.
Move right on to next question, Ron.
Well, Ann.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't say that. Go ahead. A little follow-up.
Okay.
First of all, yes, you represent the individuals in a city, in your ward, and we're, to me, I believe I'm expressing generally fact. Yes, there's concerns here, but throughout all my, you know, participation in various groups, various involvement, over the years, you accumulate the, and listen to the concerns of others, having gone knocking on doors, learning things that you hadn't realized before. So no, you're certainly there to represent individuals. I had once told a candidate, the constituents want the streets painted a different color? That's their concern, that's what you bring and present. I know that right now, the concerns are extensive as far as certainly public safety, et cetera, and those are the concerns you bring, and you represent, and you work towards solving.
Thank you. Dennis?
The number one issue in the city right now is public safety. Public safety has always been a major issue with me from day one. And I'm, you know, I'm happy to say, back in 2002 to 2004, I helped implement the traffic safety division of this city. We did not have cruisers that were just assigned to stop and trucks, any kind of a moving violation, stickers, mufflers, and all that stuff. And they bring in over a million dollars a year, and that million dollars goes back into the general fund. So I'm very, very proud that I could help implement that particular public safety feature.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go on to the next question. Ron?
What makes you qualified to hold this position? How well do you know Ward Five?
I'm going to start with Ollie.
Yes. Like I said, I was born at the Brockton Hospital. I grew up at Hill Street. I grew up on the Stoneman Ave. I also lived on Elliott Street, Wendell Ave. So most of my life, I've been a Ward Five. Most of my life. Couple, maybe four years I've been off the ward. Other than that, the heart and soul, I know my residents, I know my family, I know my friends, and I definitely can represent them to the best of my ability.
Okay, Ann?
Well, I moved to Ward Five in 1962. It's changed a lot since then. I've, how would I say it, been back and forth. I left college and came back to this community. To me, you're representing the entire community, you're part of the entire community. I know Ward Five because, first of all, I walk all over Ward Five. Second, I'm involved with the schools. I'm involved with Massasoit Community College. I'm involved with several other programs that have been effective in the community, whether it's Brockton Intifade Community, whether it's the Community Schools Advisory Board, or the Adult Learning Center Advisory Board that I serve on. I understand the needs of the community, and I believe that serving them, this is just an extension of what I already do, in a different capacity.
Thank you. Dennis?
Well, I've lived in Ward Five 44 years, and raised three children, and married to my wife Susan, and I know every single street in this ward. I fight very, very hard to repave the streets of Ward Five. For the past 14 years, I can hide, I can, I can say that more streets have been repaved in Ward Five than in the history of Ward Five. And not because I've been there longer. You have to fight to get things done in this city, and we have to fight to get Chapter 90 money. And I can say that this year, I am getting two streets done in Ward Five. One is Crestfield Terrace, off of Crestfield Drive, and the other one is going to be Drew Avenue, which is directly in back of me. So I'm very, very proud of those two. But, you know, I've been involved with East Side Improvement, the Downey Little League, East Junior High Pack, Cardinal Spelman, you name it. I volunteered, I'm a volunteer. I volunteer for everything.
Okay, this is a very important question, and it's about your qualifications. So it was only a minute, it just touched the surface. Certainly going to allow another minute for everybody, if you'd like to have it.
Okay.
Yes?
Go.
Okay. Dennis?
Well, I mean, qualifications. 14 years as a city councillor. You know, I'm proud of it. Making improvements, you know? People bump into me all over the place, and they ask me to do this and do that. You know, when you sit on the city council, you're one of 11 votes, and if you need something accomplished, you have to do your homework, and you have to get your fellow councillors to support the issues that you want to bring forward in your particular ward. It's very, very important. You have to work together. If you don't work together, you don't get anything accomplished. And I'm proud to say that I have got a lot of things accomplished in 14 years.
Thank you. Ollie?
Yes, I'm not a career politician. I haven't been in office for 14 years, but I definitely do my best to represent you and support you. Like I said, in my pamphlet, you go on my website, you could call me, text me, hit me on Facebook, you can knock on my front door at 69 Bud Ave, and I'll answer, and I'll help you as best as in my ability.
Ann?
Yes, well, I believe actions speak louder than words, and I believe I've demonstrated for quite some time now, that my compassion for the city, my hard work, I've tackled some very sensitive issues over the years. And it's not always glamorous, but you work with people to get things done, whether it's Brockton Intifade Community, whether it's a variety of different issues, for example, Stop the Power, or the former trash transportation that was attempted to come to this city. And you're not always greeted positively, and other times, you're embraced for speaking up. I believe that my years of experience have demonstrated that I am ready to work and have worked with other individuals in a variety of different capacities. I also believe my education and experience, though I'm not an elected official at this time, have demonstrated and can be instrumental in improving and making stronger change for this community.
Okay, I want to make sure that we, I want to make sure of my time. I believe we have about 15 minutes left, yes?
We're 23 minutes left.
23, okay. What I'm going to do at this point, since we have a two-minute closing statement, is I'm going to allow each of you to ask each other a question. And that would mean Dennis can ask Ann a question, and Ollie, Ollie can ask Ann and Dennis. We may not have time for rebuttal or follow-up, and then you can do your closing statement. Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
Yes? Okay? Yes? Okay. So why don't we start with Ollie asking his questions?
All right, definitely.
My question is, I was watching the debate earlier, and Dawn Carr also mentioned that she was bringing in the barbecue sauce business, Bootsy. So was it you bringing it in, or was it Dawn Carr bringing in the barbecue sauce business?
Okay, that question is from Ollie to Dennis.
To Dennis.
I was at the meeting with the mayor's office with Mr. Brown. Okay?
So who's bringing it in? She bringing it in?
I was at the meeting with the mayor at the office, at the mayor's office.
So is she bringing it, or you bringing it?
I just answered the question.
Oh, okay. I'm just, well, you know, I'm just asking a question. Sorry about that. I'm just, that's what I heard earlier, I'm just double checking, I apologize.
Question for Ann?
Okay, and I can ask?
No, 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 question from Ollie to Ann.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And then you'll get your turn, and Dennis, okay?
Question for Ann. I really don't know much about Ann. You don't have a website?
Okay, well, I've, actually, I didn't know too much about you, so I was curious about a couple of things. What do you want to know about me? Let's see. I've had extensive amount of experience writing grants for several programs in the city to keep things going. I'm a strong advocate, and have been many times to Beacon Hill on several issues that are of concern to this city. I've been responsible for working and to raise a lot of money for both the Brockton Library Foundation, DW Hill Park Association, and several other organizations. I believe that all these combined are very advantageous to the community. I'm up there for the Kids' Road Races, in a very glamorous environment, in a shed, keying in several hundred runners over eight weeks, well, 16 weeks of every year. It's my decision to be involved in all these things, and I have no regrets. I just wish someone more time in the day to do more things for the community.
Thank you. Dennis, a question for each of your opponents.
Okay, I have a question for Mr. Spears.
Yes.
You said that I was a lifetime politician and too old to do my job.
No, I never said that. I said, what I said is, you are a career politician, 14 years, and I never said you're too old to do your job. I never said that.
First of all, there's no such thing as a career politician. As long as the people of Ward Five think I'm doing a great job, they will reelect me.
Definitely. Well, a career politician, you'd probably be trying to go for the blueprint, do the 20 years, and then you can retire with the pension.
We, first of all, first of all... Okay. There's very, very little pension at $10,000 a year stipend that we get.
Pension is pension, buddy.
Okay.
Okay.
So would you donate that back to the community?
You can...
Would I donate that back to the community?
Yes.
I think I earn that money. Because if you look at what I get paid over the period of what I do for the city of Brockton and the constituents of Ward Five, it comes out to Ollie as about 25 cents an hour.
So would you donate it?
Question for...
Would you donate it? Yes or no?
No.
Okay.
I think I earn it. Just like you'd be earning if you beat me.
Question for Ann.
Question for Ann?
Yes.
I really don't have a question for Ann. Ann and I have been friends for a long time, and this young lady back in 2002, 2004, helped me get elected. So I really don't have a question for Ms. Ann.
Okay. Ann, you get a question to each one of your opponents.
Okay, well, I'm going to ask Ollie, because I know that he works for Bank of America, about working on making it easier for, to do business here in Brockton, and to get businesses established.
Yes, ma'am.
Several people have talked about that concern, and apparently, there is many hoops to go through, and it doesn't seem to be advantageous for anyone involved, whether the community, the business, or the city itself. So do you have any ideas on that, since you're in the banking world?
What's the question?
About helping...
Is it Bank of America, or...
No, 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 it's about helping, since you work for a bank, helping businesses in this community. Do you see any ideas? Do you have any ideas on helping businesses and the city do business with businesses more easily in the community?
Yeah, definitely. My plan would be to put together a checklist, so when businesses come to City Hall, they know exactly what they need. Okay, you need these 20 things? All right, here's a checklist. Do you need A, B, C, D? Check it off, and then they can get their permits, versus coming to City Hall, okay, you need this permit. You get the permit, and the next thing you know, you go in front of the license board or anything, and say, okay, you need this permit. So instead of giving businesses a runaround, let's give them exactly what they need. Okay, you need 20 things? Get this done, and you could start business in the city of Brockton. So streamline, streamline businesses.
Thank you. Ann, question for Dennis.
Okay, this is just curious, and this is not, you're not the only one that's, I always mention this, the financing for getting the streets paved. I mean, you think about all the streets in Ward Five, and, you know, you had a fight to get two of them. I mean, I just picture you guys in the back room, you know, breaking up the city with the map and saying, oh, I get this, I get this, you know, we get the money. What's the deal? Why does it? Why is it such a deal?
Okay, this is how, this is how the streets get paved in the city of Brockton. We received Chapter 90 money from the state. This year, it was 1.5, and it just went to 2.5 million dollars, okay? And the cost of the asphalt runs about $125 a square foot. So how many streets can you do for 2.5 billion dollars? I submit 10 streets a year. Every year I'm in office, I submit 10 streets to the mayor and the TPDW commissioner. It goes in front of a committee that rates the streets on a 1 to 10 basis. Okay, so if I wanted to do Bud Avenue for Mr. Spears, and the TPDW commissioner says, I'm going to do Ashfield Drive instead, he loses out, and I lose out because I wanted that street done. Sometimes I don't get to pick, but one out of the 10 will get done.
Okay, thank you. Just doing a quick time check right now to see what we have left. We were doing this one for one hour even, if possible. What do we have left of time? Huh? 15 minutes, okay. Ron, you had a couple of yes and no questions, or maybe, I don't know if we have...
Well, I'd like to ask another question. Do we have time for...
Say that again, the time? I just want to make sure. 15 minutes. Yeah, but we've got to stick to just the one minute.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. The budget that came down from the mayor's office this year, it was voted positively by most, and that included the 2.5 percent, well, it was a little bit less than 2.5 percent property tax increase, and it could be less as the months go on, but it was passed. For the incumbent, Councilor Dunlap, he can explain how he voted, and I'll ask the other candidates how they would have voted under those circumstances.
Okay, so we'll start with Councilor Dunlap.
So I get to go first?
Yeah, probably only 30 seconds, too.
Well, okay, I did vote. I voted no on that. The reason why I voted no is that when I was out and about in the ward, I bumped into a lot of people out there, and things are tough, you know, and some of the seniors can't afford a tax increase. And I felt that at this particular time, we should have sent it back to the mayor for adjustments to lower the tax rate. Now, you said that before that we could raise taxes 2.5 percent. The levy has never been in this city raised at 2.5 percent. It's always 1.4 to 1.7, okay? And that's where it falls. The tax levy at 2.5 percent, if it ever got raised, you'd be paying another $1,000 a year in your taxes, which will never happen.
Thank you. Ollie?
Yes, this time, he voted against it. But my opinion, I would have voted against it also, and it's a lot of people hurting and struggling, so definitely no on tax raises. And no on raising, giving people raises to the department heads.
Ann?
Well, to be honest with you, I, part of me would have abstained, because I believe part of the problem is, we never see, and the community doesn't see the budget in a timely fashion to review it, assess it, question it. So I agree that people are struggling, and the stories that were presented in front of city council that night were very, very distressing. But I also, I still want to know where the money is being spent, why, and how we can change the way it's being spent. So I would not have voted for the raises.
So you're all three in agreement?
Yes.
Very good.
Okay. Any follow-up to that?
Can I just rebuttal on that?
30 seconds.
30 seconds, real quick. Okay. The city of Brockton right now has over $260 million in bonds, okay? Outstanding bonds. We rebuilt the waste treatment plant for millions. We have new schools that we have to pay for. We just put new roofs, new windows in the junior highs, in the high school, retirement fund we gave money to, and the insurance fund. Those are all outstanding bonds that the city is floating. It's $260 million that we pay back every year.
30 seconds, Ann?
Well, I'm actually very glad that we did work on the wastewater treatment facility. To me, that's an investment that other people can take advantage of. And that's, I work closely with the Metrocell Chamber of Commerce, once again, as I mentioned. And they have worked closely with elected officials to work on getting other communities to be able to take advantage of our wastewater treatment facility and get some revenue into this city. So that's an example of turning something around.
Ollie?
I'm all set.
All set? Okay. We'll move right into closing statements. And let me reset my clock, so I have two minutes. The order of the draw earlier in the evening was, the first person to do the closing statement would be Ollie Spears.
Like I said, on September 17th, I'm asking for your vote. I want you to go to the polls and voice your choice. I've been in Broughton all my life. I started when I was 16 years old with our Posse, even before that, changing and helping the community. I have always been part of the community. I've always been a person that helps the community. And like I said, on September 17th, I'm asking for your voice, I mean, asking for your vote, for accountability, for accessibility, work with neighborhood associations, working with the neighborhoods, and creating neighborhood associations for we get more pride in our communities, enhancing some of the neighborhood watches, street by street, neighbor by neighbor. So like I said, September 17th, I'm asking for your vote for be the next Ward Five city councilor, and I'll represent you to the fullest. Thank you.
Okay, you still have time? Are you good?
All set. Short and sweet.
Okay. Next would be Dennis Danapley.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you, Ron, and thank you, Broughton Community Access, for having this debate forum, whatever you want to call it tonight. And my record speaks for itself. 14 years as your current city councilor. My concerns are your concerns. I'm available full-time. I ran in 2000 to be a full-time city councilor. I only work part-time, so I'm available anytime of the year to meet anybody. I'm involved 44 years in Ward Five. I'm a resident and taxpayer and a volunteer, dedicated to improve Ward Five, making it a safer place to work and play. I'm asking for your vote on September 17th. Please vote for Dennis Danapley, Councilor, Ward Five. Thank you, Ron, and thank you, Mark.
You're welcome. Anne?
Well, first of all, thanks, everyone from BCA and Ron and Mark for hosting this this evening. And I'm asking for your vote on September 17th. I believe that my experience, my education, and my participation in the community over the years have demonstrated my compassion, my desire, and my sacrifices for wanting to improve this community. I am not afraid to learn. I am not afraid to work with others in the community I have had. I have had over the years. I believe in bringing institutions of higher learning and their talented individuals. The community itself, I believe that people don't need to be handpicked to be part of groups, commissions, and other activities that affect the community itself and the governing aspect of the community. And I could, you know, cite various examples. I'm a strong proponent of including the city. I mentioned before, the image of the city comes from people participating in the city. Last year, we had a huge event to recognize Rocky Maciano. Hundreds of thousands of people heard about Broughton in a positive light. We have a tower up at the beginning of this city here for DW Field Park, a national historic site. We have individuals that are recognized. Just recently, I was on Cape Cod, was in there an article about Luke Colombo, the late Luke Colombo, a great jazz musician that was part of this community. There are people making this community absolutely terrific every day. Nothing's perfect anywhere, and nothing will ever be perfect. But it's a demonstration of how people's commitment and compassion, like, I believe that I've been committed to this community, and I'm committed to the betterment of it. It's not that things can't be better, it's things and how to bring them and make them better. I can be reached at 508-584-6919, and greenbeachav at yahoo dot com. Please be part of the positive of the community and vote for me on September 17th. Thank you.
Okay, well, that wraps up the debate. I'm going to allow Ron some final thoughts, and then I will end the debate.
Well, both BCA and WXBR Radio believe that you need to make the proper choice, and you need to vote on September 17th. It's important that this is not just a sampling of votes, but it is a mandate of votes. So please participate, it's the least that you can do, on September 17th. We are both committed, both media factions, to educate you as best as possible on all the races involved.
Well, and I'd like to echo Ron's comments and thank all three of the candidates for your willingness to participate. I think this is important public information. That's our role here, both of us, to keep the public informed. And any of you would be a credit to being an elected official, whether it be the incumbent councilor or the challengers. I thank you for participating, and I thank my staff and crew. Stay tuned for more election coverage on Broughton Community Access and WXBR. We're going to be partnering up for the election as well. And we will be back with mayor's debate and also the Ward Seven city council debate. Thanks for watching.